We will call to order the Lee Summit Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, July 27th, 2023. Could I get a roll call, please?
Art Kitchens. Cinda Raider.
Present.
Jake Lovelace.
Present.
Dana Arth.
Present.
Donnie Funk.
Present.
Terry Trafton.
Present.
Tonya Johnna Ford. Chip Tzatzinsky.
Present.
Randy Benbrook.
Present.
Thank you. We are going to do a little agenda management here and we are going to move item A to item C. So, uh, item A will become item C. We are, excuse me, did I say that correctly? Yes. Item A, we got that. So, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as changed.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as changed.
Have a motion of second?
Second.
Motion, second, can I get a vote, please?
Cinda Raider?
Aye.
Jake Lovelace?
Yes.
Dana Arth?
Aye.
Donnie Funk?
Aye.
Terry Trafton?
Aye.
Chip Tzatzinsky?
Aye.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. This is our spot for public comments. So we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda and we have one item on the consent agenda and that is the approval of the July 13th, 2023 Planning Commission Action Letter. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion of a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, can I get a vote on approval of the consent agenda?
Art Kitchens. Cinda Raider?
Aye.
Jake Lovelace?
Yes.
Dana Arth?
Aye.
Donnie Funk?
Yes.
Terry Trafton?
Aye.
Chip Tzatzinsky?
Aye.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
And the consent agenda has been approved. So we will jump into our public hearings with our changes of the agenda. We will open our public hearing application, PL 2023068 UDO Amendment for an Ordinance Amendment, Chapter 30, amending Chapter 33, Article 7, subdivisions of the Lee Summit City Code of Ordinance to allow for a requirement of public infrastructure with the administrative approval of minor plats, city of Lee Summit applicant. Anyone wishing to provide testimony or speak on behalf of this application, please stand and be sworn in at this time.
I do.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Joshua Johnson here, Director of Development Services. Uh, tonight before you is a Unified Development Ordinance Amendment, um, involving minor plats. And what I'll do first is talk about what a minor plat is and then what the amendment's trying to accomplish. And then with your feedback, uh, hopefully we can move on to City Council with this amendment. But to start, um, minor plats are not something that comes before the Planning Commission, but it's an administrative process where somebody can create up to three lots or adjust a boundary between, uh, two or more lots. Um, again, it involves resurveys, things of that nature. Um, when somebody comes in with a building permit and they don't have a platted lot, it's just described by meets and bounds. We actually force them to survey that and create a platted lot. That's a minor plat as well. So the, the goal of the amendment tonight, right now, there is no administrative authority to require public infrastructure with minor plats. So at the administrative level, if we're asking for, in the example I used over and over again, and the staff report was sidewalks, if we need to require sidewalks, we actually don't have the regular authority, authority to do that. Um, we actually need that authority explicitly given to us as staff from council. Um, and the amendment does that. Uh, let me go to that language very quickly. Oh, so this is what I'm talking about. If you imagine, um, uh, that lot at the corner or the one we're standing on here, uh, was to do a minor plat, right now, we don't have the authority to extend that sidewalk. Um, the UDO amendment, uh, puts language into the UDO that, um, says the City Council hereby authorizes the director to require construction of public improvements as a condition of approval of a minor plat. Um, so that's kind of the heart of this issue. Um, another thing I want to emphasize is with this, we were required to put an appeal process in the ordinance. And those appeals would go first to the Planning Commission, where you'd form a recommendation, and then we go on to the City Council. So, and that would be an instance where somebody didn't agree that they should or, or would want to put in stuff like, things like sidewalk or other public infrastructure. Um, this also could involve things such as sewer and water improvements as well. I just highlighted sidewalk for, because to me, it's the easiest to visualize. And it's really to help us, uh, reduce gaps in our system, things of that nature. Um, David Bushak is not here tonight, but he's the one that kind of helped me construct this amendment. But, um, I think I've done a pretty good job of, uh, parroting what he has said to me. So I think with that, I'd love to have a discussion. And I have the full amendment if you'd like to kind of scroll through it line by line, uh, if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Uh, Commissioner Raider, any questions?
Um, yes. Josh, when you were talking about the different, um, things that you would have to do, such as the sidewalk gaps, sewer things, I mean, are they minor things that would be, that would be required that you would want to, um, be able to make decisions about or, or where's the drop off point of, of something that would be like more serious? And I don't exactly know what I would be thinking. But say, for instance, a parking lot.
Well.
Like, that's what I experienced.
So a parking lot would probably come through with a larger project such as a preliminary development plan. If we were minor plating a commercial project, more than likely, we're adjusting lot lines. We're not creating new commercial lots. And actually, in the UDO, most of our zones are what are called planned zones, planned commercial, uh, planned office, things of that nature. So with that, um, any development in those planned zones requires a preliminary development plan. And that's then going to trigger parking lots, detention basins, things of that nature. You can't actually, you cannot dedicate, uh, common areas with a minor plat. So that's going to end up being a full plat that would go to Planning Commission and City Council. So those wouldn't even go through this process.
So the reason I asked that was because mine was, that my downtown office involved a minor plat.
Okay.
Change. But I was doing it also in a commercial. So it kind of overlapped.
And you had a preliminary development plan as well?
Pardon me?
You had a preliminary development plan as well?
I did. But it involved a minor plat. So it's just like, okay, well, but it's anything that's big like that would have to go through planning anyway. So.
Yeah. But if there was some scenario where you just had a minor plat, yeah, we could require, um, sidewalk in front of the business, things of that nature, uh, sewer extension or upgrade if required. So yeah, that would, that would, we'd get you one way or another.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Lovelace?
Uh, thank you, sir. Um, Joshua, so you reference sidewalks, like specifically here. What happens right now when somebody comes in and, and they want to do a minor replat on something and it's not, not within your purview right now to require that they put in sidewalks? How do we get those sidewalks right now?
We ask.
Okay.
And if they challenge us, then, um, it can be tough because right now, technically, we can say, okay, now you've got to do a full, full plat.
Right.
Um, but we don't like forcing the issue in that manner to us. This is, and we have told people, okay, you don't have to build them. We have had to give that up. I'm trying to tactfully say we bluff. Um, but as we pulled back and thought about this, we said, hey, let's amend the UDO so this is explicit and clear from the beginning and staff has the authority to require these things.
So, and you, you mentioned some other utilities and things like that. Um, what's an instance of utilities that wouldn't be required as part of a, as part of a minor plat?
Um, if water utilities came to us, and this would be more of a downtown issue, and there's sewers that are kind of snake through backyards and done through, where there's not easements or something like that, um, we could say, hey, half a block up, there's a main you could connect to. You need to bring it down the street or on one side of the street or the other. That would be something we could now require, uh, with this process.
As opposed to?
Uh, somehow letting them continue the odd situation they've got with the stuff in the backyard with no easements, things of that nature.
Because you wouldn't have authority to dictate to them where they went?
Correct.
Okay.
Because what this does, it engages the entire subdivision ordinance's public improvement section.
Okay. Okay. Um, are there any circumstances, I guess? A bit, thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to get clarification on the process. So right now, you don't have the authority to do it. But if it needs to be done, then.
We ask nicely.
And then if that doesn't happen, does, it just falls aside, falls, falls away?
Yeah, right now, we basically have kind of said, all right, well, we don't have that regulatory, regulatory authority, so we can't get the improvement we need. And it's been 90, I think it's been 100% since I've been here about sidewalks. I mean, that's where this has come up.
But right now, the risk is that we have places where the sidewalk is not complete.
Yeah, and we're, we're adding, we're adding impacts, we're adding intensity by creating, you know, two more lots than we had before.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Trafton?
Thank you, Chair Funk. Thank you, Josh. I appreciate it. Um, I had, I was curious, so this is a way, is, does the UDO then allow if we're going, is this mostly for larger lots? Or is it?
No, not really. Um, it, it honestly, it can, it involves a multitude of lots. Um, I know you've got something later on your agenda that'll later be minor platted into two lots and that would be looked at at that time.
That's, I guess, one of the things I was curious about. But I'm also curious about, so will this allow, you know how we've talked about the need for smaller lot sizes and town to allow for smaller stock to be built? Um, and so when you say taking two or more lots, but then not dividing them into more than three, to me, that is, that what we're trying to get at here with this?
Not the explicit goal. I think it's a step towards that goal. We don't have zones, though, that would just allow somebody to chop up a vacant piece of property into 40-foot lots. Right now, we don't have that structure set up.
Do we have, does it stipulate or is it just basically under kind of the staff's purview to, like, the small, all the subdivision of these lots into?
Oh, um, I think I see where you're going. It's up to the zone that that's in.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if it was an R1 regular residential, like downtown, I'm thinking downtown Lee Summit. I'm also thinking, like, on Third Street, there's been a couple of homes demolished now. I, you know, I'm guessing those lot, those vacant lots the city owns that they bought for construction would be subdivided, probably not for the purpose of necessarily building. But, um, I'm just curious because I know that, that it's a, it is something that, you know, is part of our big plan that we've developed for the city is to have the ability to build those smaller stock homes. So yeah, I was just curious about. But, so there's no stip, stipulation that it can, it can't be smaller than 30 feet or whatever?
Yeah, whatever the base zone would allow, it can't be smaller than that. Because, because this is an administrative process, we can't go outside what the zoning would allow.
Gotcha. Okay. Very good. I think that's very helpful. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Tzatzinsky?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Josh, just, you know, how far does this or could this potentially go? I mean, could this also trigger the unimproved road ordinance where they would have to, you know, could it go as far as that as where you guys could be like, oh, we don't need a sidewalk, but now, you know, you're a rural lot, but now we want you to improve the road up to this part? I don't know. I just want to know where, what could be the boundary? I mean, obviously, you said it's 100% so far sidewalks, but what could it be?
So, uh, great question. I'd actually talked to, uh, Michael Park about this. And the unimproved road policy has some language where it excludes minor plats.
Thank you. Commissioner Benbrook?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, just a clarification, um, infrastructure, how is that defined? Is it going to be sidewalks and sewer? Is it going to be, um, water and power? Uh, I guess my question is, is if somebody has a lot, they want to divide it into three lots, are they then going to be required to not just put, um, you know, storm and sidewalk? Are they going to be required to put power and water into each lot?
Well, um, we would look, water is one of the city utilities. We'd look at water, sewer. Um, we, we would look at storm water, but usually with developments of this scale, we review that at the plot plan stage with the, uh, single family, uh, permit. And then, um, sidewalk would be another thing we'd look at. Usually, power and things like cable, the city actually doesn't examine those.
Okay. So it wouldn't be forcing them to put, to have access at the curb if it wasn't already there?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Other questions from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner Raider.
Um, hey, Josh, you brought up about, um, the, well, Commissioner Trafton, it actually made me kind of think of this. And then you brought up, uh, you said at some point, we're going to look at the structure of smaller, being able to develop smaller, broken up lots.
Uh, it's on the table.
It's on the table. Okay, for, for more attainable homes?
It's been discussed at CDC a couple, three times over the past couple of years, but it hasn't gotten to the point where CDC, where we've proposed an ordinance, CDC has said, okay, move this on through the process.
And so then kind of thinking about this too, if, if you have the, uh, authority to, to be able to, um, help people put in the sidewalks, encourage them to put in the sidewalks on a minor plat, that's going to add cost to that. And before, you weren't, you didn't have, they, they weren't required to do that. Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you, Josh. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Lovelace, go ahead.
So I guess to piggyback on that, would the city unimprove, or, um, sidewalks program not come in and still require that you had that setback from the street and then the city put in that sidewalk at some point in time, under the scenario that she just tossed out?
I'm afraid I don't understand your question.
So she said that it, based on what the, you know, the ordinance is right now, that you guys don't have the authority to be able to dictate that, would the city not then come back in down the road and likely connect that sidewalk?
It would be a cost to the taxpayers, yes.
Right, to connect the sidewalk at that point in time. Okay. And then, second, um, I guess to, to finish up that thought and to clarify for everybody, um, that is because it's not that the setbacks would change or anything like that. There's still going to be that section at the front of the lot that is going to be designated for sidewalk, whether they put it in or whether taxpayers put it in when the city goes sidewalks.
Yeah, we, the proper right of way, uh, would have to be established, but yeah.
Right, okay. Um, and then just indulge me here, um, because I'm trying to think of all the scenarios that you might have replayed. I mean, so if you had a, a subdivision like this, like the picture that you have here, it was 120 foot wide lot and you had appropriate, you had appropriate depth where you could split it up into two 60-foot lots or?
Sure.
50 foot, whatever, whatever R1 requires as a minimum. Um, the standards of that subdivision, when it was originally platted, don't require that they have sidewalk that connects that through there just as part of what that lot would have otherwise been?
Um, well, possibly not. That might be why it's not there.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Josh.
Thank you. Anything else from the commission?
All right, thank you, sir.
Close, we need to get you a vote for this, right?
Yeah, it's a recommendation to City Council.
Close the public hearing. Any discussions? Commissioner Raider? Close the public hearing. Do you have any discussion or anything before we? Lovelace? Arth? Trafton, any discussion? Randy Benbrook? Nope, you're good. Mr. Trafton, will you, uh, lead us in your recommendation, please?
Most definitely, Chair Funk. I move to recommend approval of a UDO amendment for an ordinance amending Chapter 33, Article 7, subdivisions of the Lee Summit Code of Ordinances to allow for a requirement of public infrastructure like the administrative approval of minor plats, city of Lee Summit applicant.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Could I get a vote, please?
Cinda Raider?
Aye.
Jake Lovelace?
Yes.
Dana Arth?
Aye.
Donnie Funk?
Yes.
Terry Trafton?
Aye.
Chip Tzatzinsky?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
And the application has been recommended for approval. We will move on to our next public hearing, which will be, uh, item B, and we will open up public hearing application, PL 2023-128, rezoning from AG and R1 to RLL, 3904 and 3912 Southwest Prior Road, Michael Carmack and Deborah Thompson applicants. Anyone wishing to speak on behalf of this application, please stand and be sworn in at this time. Thank you. Um, just for the record, Mr. Carmack and Mrs. Thompson are present, but Shannon's just going to come straight forward and give us a presentation.
All right, Shannon McGuire, Staff Planner, uh, sorry, Senior Planner now. Uh, please enter their record, Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 13.
Exhibits 1 through 13 noted and entered into the record.
The subject property here is about, uh, three tenths of a mile south of 150 on Prior. You can see properties here outlined in the orange. Um, the applicants do propose to rezone the properties from AG to an R1 to RLL for the sole purpose of a lot line adjustment. Um, the existing homes will remain, and there is no new development being proposed with this rezoning. Uh, the surrounding properties to the, the north are ag, as well as, um, small portion to the south is ag and, and as well as to the west. Um, some R1 to the north, you got, um, Osage, north of, a little further north, and then, um, PMX across here. Surrounding properties north, south, and west are characterized by a rural type development. East across Prior is the Napa Valley Residential subdivision. Properties to the south are mostly, uh, single-family residential on large. Um, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comp plan. Comp plan does identify this as a presidential one in the future land use. Um, the existing homes do meet all the goals and objectives of that. Again, no new development. Um, sole purpose of the, uh, rezoning is to, to, um, adjust some lot lines. Um, as the homes are remaining, um, and no new development, um, there's no projected or perceived, um, any negative impact on to the surrounding properties. There's, the UDO does have, uh, a couple, uh, different zonings, uh, classifications for, for residents, um, or single family. You got the AG, the RDR, RLL, and R1 zoning districts. However, um, they're not all appropriate for this, uh, type of development. Um, the AG and RDR have, um, pretty restrictive setbacks, um, that the current homes could not meet. Um, and then R1, uh, would require the existing homes to hook to, um, public SAS, public sewer system, um, which is not available. Um, so the most appropriate rezoning district would be that RLL district. Um, that would allow the existing homes to remain in compliance with all UDO requirements, as well as the Jackson County requirements for the existing. Um, really, um, pretty simple application. We do have two, uh, conditions of approval here. Um, the first one is that any, uh, subdivision or, or lot line adjustments will require minor plat. Um, and then upon approval of the rezoning, um, from ag to RLL, the property owners will be assumed responsibility for maintenance and mowing of the right of way in front of that, that property along the road. So that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Shannon. Public, so I'll jump in. We'll start the other way. Commissioner Benbrook, anything?
No questions. Thank you, Chair.
Tzatzky?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Shannon, do they have a plan to show how the new property is going to be, like, the new line and, I know it?
Uh, they, I don't have one currently. That hasn't been filed with the city, but essentially they're taking the six acre lot and splitting it directly in half where this three acres here will be assumed by the back three acres. Front three acres will remain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Trafton? Marth? Lovelace? Lovelace? Shannon, I think the only question, I have two quick questions, are these going to be occupied by the applicants?
The, the back house, I'm fairly confident, yes, but they are here, they can answer that question, I suppose.
Yes, I've lived, I've lived in the...
I used to go around one since ninety-four.
Okay, just a quick, I just want to make sure you guys were the occupants and you didn't have, okay.
Our father passed away, that's why we're here, and in the trust, his land was divided up fifty-fifty, so pretty much while we're here.
Thank you. And then Shannon, it says we're rezoning from A G and R one.
Correct.
So if this is not eligible for R one, why was it zoned R one?
So in nineteen ninety-three, it was rezoned, it was a pre, it's a preexisting legal nonconforming condition. If we were to not rezone the flag lot, then we would have a condition where we would have a dual zoned lot, and it's just not good planning practice to have two zonings on a single lot, so we're going to go ahead and clean it all up at once.
Okay, that's all I have, anything else from the commission? We will close the public hearing and open up for any discussion or emotion questions, so I'm assuming there's no discussions. Commissioner Benbrook, would you like to lead us in a motion?
Absolutely, thank you, Chair. I move to recommend approval of the application PL two zero two three dash one two eight, rezoning from A G to R one to R L, and R one to R L L, thirty-nine oh four and thirty-nine twelve Southwest Prior Road, Michael Carmack and Deborah Thompson applicants.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, could I get a vote on this application, please?
Cinderaiter.
Aye.
Jake Lovelace.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Aye.
Donnie Funk.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Aye.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
Application has been recommended for approval. Moving right along, we will jump to our final and last public hearing and open up application PL two zero two three dash zero five three, preliminary development plan Kensington Farms, second plat, third plat, and future phase revised architect inspire homes applicant. This application is to be continued to a date certain of August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Mr. Tuzinski, can I get a motion on continuing this application?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue public hearing application number PL two zero two three dash zero five three, preliminary development plan Kensington Farms, second plat, third plat, and future phases, revised architecture, inspired homes applicant, to be continued to a date certain of August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, could I get a vote on this application, please?
Cinderaiter.
Aye.
Jake Lovelace.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Aye.
Donnie Funk.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Aye.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
This application has been continued to a date certain of August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. That wraps up our public hearings and moves us to our roundtable. Any roundtables from the commission? Arth?
You want me to say something? No, we're good.
You don't have anything, anybody? Oh, you do.
He does.
Go ahead.
Good evening. I just want to take time, if you caught it earlier, when Shannon was introducing himself and doing his public hearing, his title has changed. Is he still behind me?
Congratulations.
Shannon has done a tremendous job, yes.
Police.
That's why.
Senior planner, he has his own protection.
He does, he's getting a big head now, but he has been with the city for a very long time, he does a ton of work for the department and people across the city, actually, in different departments, always very friendly, smile on his face, even when he's super busy, he's there to help, he does a tremendous job with our data collection, our G I S work, and so he was promoted, he's done a fabulous job, and it's well deserved, and I just wanted to recognize him for that, so he's now our senior planner.
Right, congratulations, Shannon.
Welcome.
Anything else, we good?
You're good, thank you.
We are adjourned, thirty-one minutes.